Committee being six o'clock, I want to call to order this August 5th, 2024, a meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board. Let everybody know that Chelmsford Telemedia is broadcasting this meeting live and also recording it for later rebroadcast. If you'd please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Okay, we'll start the meeting with a public service announcements, and the first one is going to be done by Harrison Maughan from the Town Clerk's Office.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Harrison Maughan, Park Park Support Coordinator for the Town Clerk's Office. I have a quick update regarding the September 3rd primary election. Approximately 6,800 ballots have gone out so far for this election. We are also offering absentee voting in person. If you're going to be out of town on the date of the election, you can vote over the counter in our office. No appointment needed during our regular business hours. Voter registration deadline will be August 24th at 5:00 PM. You can check your voter registration status at chelmsfordma.gov/vote. The in-person early voting will be August 24th through August 30th for this election. Our weekend hours will be from 1:00 to 5:00 PM, and weekdays during regular Town Hall office hours. The vote-by-mail application deadline for this election is August 26th at 5:00 PM. Completed ballots must be received by the Town Clerk's Office by 8:00 PM on election night. Thank you for your attention. If you have any questions, please contact our office.
Thank you. Okay, a few more public service announcements. Aaron?
From the Chelmsford Health Department, we have a free Narcan training on Tuesday, August 6th, from 6:00 to 6:30 PM at the Chelmsford Town Hall Fire Training Room. To register, you can call the Health Department at 978-250-5241, or email tangel@chelmsfordmass.gov. The Health Department welcomes you to join us as we walk on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail with the walking group every second and fourth Tuesday, May through September, from 9:00 AM to 9:30 AM. They meet at the 110 Ballfields at the intersection of Fletcher Street and Chelmsford Street. For questions or concerns, you can contact the Chelmsford Health Department. The Chelmsford Military Community Covenant Task Force invites the community to attend their Military Appreciation Cookout. This is Tuesday, August 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Chelmsford Lodge of Elks Pavilion at 300 Littleton Road. It's free to all. There's hamburgers, hot dogs, watermelon desserts, soft drinks, and a cash bar. Next, we have a free event hosted by the Chelmsford Health Department, the Third Annual Plant Positivity Event, where youth can decorate a plant pot and attach a positive quote. This is open to any youth ages 10 and up. It's at the Chelmsford Town Hall Gym, Tuesday, August 20th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. The Chelmsford Health Department is also hosting a CPR training on Thursday, August 22nd, at the Chelmsford Town Hall at 50 Billrica Road. And the cost of the training is $20 per person, and participants who complete the three-hour training will obtain an American Heart Association Heart Saver Certificate that is valid for two years. For questions, you can contact the Chelmsford Health Department. The Chelmsford Health Department is also hosting their annual Candlelight Vigil for International Overdose Awareness Day. This will be at the Chelmsford Center Town Common at 4 North Road on Saturday, August 31st at 6:30 PM. They will sign the names of loved ones lost, and the event begins at 7:00 PM. And they will light candles to remember those lost to overdose and to show support for those struggling with addiction. Chelmsford Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee is looking for feedback. They have a survey available on the town website, and we encourage the public to go and give them some feedback about what they would like to see in our outdoor spaces. And the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Group is also looking for feedback. They also have a survey on the town website available. And lastly, the Chelmsford Strategic Plan Committee is hosting an event, Creating Chelmsford's Future Community Kickoff Event. This is open to the public, and they're looking for public input on how to help shape our community. There will be community visioning forums, and this will be held the 18th of September at 5:30 PM at the Town Senior Center at 75 Groton Road. For questions, you can contact 978-250-5231.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is the public input part of the meeting. If anybody would like to address the board on any topic other than those included in our public hearings this evening, you can come up to the microphone at this time.
Perfect time.
Yes.
Brian Latina-
And just a reminder, you have three minutes, a three-minute-
Yeah, I've heard of that. Brian Latina, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Rep. And the First Amendment doesn't set three minutes, just for the record. I looked at the Select Board and Town Manager's Goals and was struck by a couple of the topics that you just read. Free Narcom training, and in particular, there was a little note about drug overdose things. In the Select Board Goals, we have that we want to reconsider marijuana in town. And I thought, that's kind of ironic, that on the one hand, we're losing citizens in our country, and probably in our town as well, due to drugs, and on the other hand, we're asking you to go and look at putting marijuana dispensaries in the town, possibly growing the stuff here. Please don't. Town Meeting said no twice. We had four warrant articles the first time. I drove up to Townsend a couple days ago, and there's dispensaries all along the way, so if you really need dope, you can buy it in other towns. Let's not make Chelmsford that way. Second thing I noticed was, there's a note in there about MWRA options. We don't have enough water. We have a sewer problem, and we're building like crazy. The state comes in and tells us that we need to take 10% of our town and set it aside for more housing. We need to watch out. We cannot keep developing ourselves into the suburbs of Boston like we're doing now. Thank you. I know I have a limited amount of time in my new country that I'm living in now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in the audience that would like to speak to the board? We have-
Before I talk, my three minutes are up. I would like to hear each one of you's package.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Donovan, and I live in Chelmsford, and I'm trying to fight for a pet cemetery in town. And I can prove that it will not cost the taxpayers a dime if it's run properly, like the human cemetery. We need one. There are over 4,000 pets here in town, 4,000-plus, and some of that money could be used besides the maintenance it's cost. And I have a law in the State House right now, H4026, which is in a study committee, and I'm pushing to have it to save pet cemeteries. As you know, there is one that was in Tingsborough, and there's 1,000 pets and some human ashes up there, and there's three feet of weeds on top of them, and a two-family house built on the land. We're not allowed to go on it to see and find our pets. I'm hoping that Chelmsford can be ahead of the game, and I will work hard to help and to prove that it won't cost any taxpayer a dime, just the person that buries the pet. I paid for the money in Tingsborough. What it costs me to be buried is a human cemetery here, and I can prove it. Please, I'm hoping that you'll send this to the warrant at the Town Annual Meeting so that the taxpayers' representatives can approve it. Please. I'm hoping to get this squid away before I have to decide where I'm going. Thank you. Please, if you need more proof, and also, if there's an opening on the cemetery committee, I will find time to assist. I guess my three minutes might be up, or if you have any question. Some of those papers, I went to the July 4th Ceremonies Program, and at the time, I talked to every single individual that signed the paper, but unfortunately, I didn't know. I had to type it on the front of it. I spoke to every single person before they signed it, but it was not acceptable today when I brought it in. So I did have another one made up, and there's a new one with 10 signatures on it, I think 13. Twelve of them got approved. And thanks to Mr. Cohen tonight, he gave me the certified copy of it, which you people will have a copy of, and I tried to give you a copy of everything. If you have any questions, you can call me at home, or I do not have internet because I got scammed.
Okay, Mary, your three minutes are up.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a woman. You know what happens.
Okay, Sue Olson, you're here for public input?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things, just to speak with the board about. One of them is to thank our state reps, Elliot Cotaldo, Osiero, and Senator Barrett. After eight months, the bill that was proposed, number 3876, has finally made it out of the Transportation Committee, and that was on July 22nd. It has now gone to a study committee, hoping it doesn't take another eight months for the bill to get approved by the full House. My next request of the board is, I'm sure you've all heard, that Newport has been sold to a company called- VINCI, V-I-N-C-I Construction, who are located and headquartered in France. When you look on their website, one of their statements is, "They want to bolster its public works operation in the Northeast, which has considerable potential for growth in mobility infrastructure." I am hopeful that the Board of Selectmen and the town leaders are going to watch this very carefully, that we are not going to go from bad to worse. I have no idea what's going to happen or where the sale stands at this point in time, but it's very concerning. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the truck issue of overloaded trucks that are spilling gravel. It's continuous. I want to thank our DPW department for sending out the street sweepers. They're here about once a week, if not twice a month, trying to clean up the spills, and I'm wondering at what point in time, I know it's a Westford company, but they're degrading Chelmsford's roads. At what point in time, are do we send a bill to the quarry operators, both of them, and have them pay the bill for the street sweeping? And also, I'd like to know about, do we, or who, weighs the trucks when they're leaving Ledge Road? I don't know if they're being weighed. From what I see, these trucks, the loads that they're carrying are higher than the top of the truck itself, and as soon as they make corners, they spill the load, so I'm not sure whether anybody is looking at the weight of these trucks at all. And that's all I have for tonight. I appreciate you.
Right at three minutes. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so anybody else? Anybody else on Zoom, Paul?
No.
Okay. All right, next up is committee vacancies, and if you want to read those.
The following committees have vacancies as of August 5th. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the CCA Town Hall Advisory Committee, the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, the Council on Aging Board, the Commission on Disabilities, the Community Action Program Committee, the Conservation Commission, the Cultural Council, the Historic District Commission, the Holiday Decorating Committee, the Parade Committee, the Personnel Board, the Public Records Advisory Committee, the Recycling Committee, and the Roberts Field Advisory Committee. If anyone is interested in serving on a committee or board, they can contact the Town Manager's Office for more information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have several public hearings this evening. First up is a National Grid and Verizon Poll Petition for Graniteville Road. Do we have somebody on Zoom?
On Zoom.
On Zoom?
Good evening, Council. This is Sam Aung, National Grid.
Okay, do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, so we're looking to relocate Pole 68, that's kind of in front of the driveway of customer 234 Graniteville Road, move it west towards the lot line. It's going to serve two purposes. One is to reduce the line sag from, the poles aren't on the drawing, but from Pole 67 to Pole 69, that line sag is pretty significant, so we want to put that pole kind of right in the middle and reduce the sag there, and also to install a new automated reclosing device. So if a tree limb or anything was to fall in the primary, it kind of closed back in and picked the customers back up without having to send crews out. So it just improved the reliability of the area.
Okay, anybody, any board members have any questions about this petition? Okay, this is a public hearing. Do you have anybody in the room that wants to comment on this poll petition? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom, Paul, that-
Nope, nobody on Zoom.
Okay. So we'll take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the-
To close the public hearing.
Oh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody has anything, no? I'll make a motion to approve the petition for joint or identical poll locations as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And we have another-
Thank you, Council.
We have another poll petition for, let's see, this one is-
Princeton Street.
Princeton Street. Thank you. Sammy, you going to talk to us about that one, too?
I was actually unaware of this petition. It's not my design, like the Graniteville Road is, so I'm not entirely sure what our external contractors are looking to do here.
Okay, is there anybody else, Paul, on Zoom, that might be from National Grid, or anyone else?
If not, we can continue it until next meeting. That's unusual, that they would have no one here.
Is there a description of what's looking, what installation is looking to be done?
It's to install a joint-operated pole at Princeton Street.
I can hear it for our external, if that's okay with you, Council members.
You can, what, again, I missed that.
I don't mind doing the hearing for it. I just don't know what the job entails.
I have questions about the job.
Yeah, I guess the best thing might be to postpone it. I don't know if there's anybody here that has any questions about it.
In the public, you mean?
Yeah, in the public, yeah.
Brian Latina, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Rep., 15 Jesse Rhodes is my address. On these poll petitions, the Select Board has a little bit of power at the moment. They're asking for a poll in this example and the previous one, to maybe get some of our polls, even the ones, the three that are out front of this building, either reduced in size, like they do in Bedford and some of the other wealthy communities, where they cut the pole from the bottom up, so only the wire section's attached to the pole. Would you consider asking National Grid to start using that technique, since they can't seem to take the second pole out? Just cut the top off, leave it with the wires. Thank you.
I know we've been working with the town of Chelmsford, with some of the engineers about, like, removing some of the older poles also, but I can speak to supervisors about just sort of doing what you're saying, which is leaving the wires and cutting the pole button and removing that.
That's not the topic of this hearing.
Exactly. Okay, so I guess, since we're, you know, we don't really have an explanation for why this is being done, we can continue it until our next meeting, which will be on August 19th. So, you know, unless you feel comfortable talking about it.
He doesn't, he doesn't even have it in front of him.
Right.
Right. I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I don't know what the job is, to be honest.
Okay, all right. So I'll ask again, does anybody from the public here that wants to speak about it? Doesn't look like it, and there's no one on Zoom, right, Paul?
No.
Okay, so why don't we take a motion to continue it for our next meeting?
Do we, we're not having a public hearing. This is not-
This is a public hearing.
Do we need to close it, then?
No, because we're going to continue it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for the joint poll petition until August 19th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, and our third-
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. A third public hearing is in regards to the local initiative project on 243 Riverneck Road. I know we have folks here representing the applicant, so if you want to tell us what's going on, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Adam Costa. I'm an attorney with the firm of Mead, Talerman &amp; Costa, here on behalf of the applicant and the proponent for this lift endorsement. We were before you last in late June, so it's been just about six weeks. My partner, Lisa Mead, was in attendance at that meeting and had presented to you some updates that we had made to the project between the May meeting and the June meeting. What we hope to accomplish tonight, and you had made a request at that meeting that we make certain revisions to the project plans, and you had further asked that we submit those revisions, if possible, at least a couple of weeks in advance of tonight's meeting, which we did. So hopefully, you've all had an opportunity to see the revisions that have been made. We submitted three separate plans, two versions of a site plan, and then a package, about an 18-to-20-page package of revised floor plans, architecuals, and elevations, as well as a few renderings of the project as modified. So what I'd like to do briefly is just describe for you what we attempted to do to address the comments and concerns of the board and the public at the last meeting, and then maybe also just address a few of the additional requests that you had made, and I'll try and do that as I walk through the plans. So the first plan we submitted, as I mentioned, there were two versions of the site plan. The first version is what you see on the screen before you. This version shows a few things. First, it shows a division line drawn between the portion of this property at 243 Riverneck Road that is proposed to be the, what we refer to as the development area. You can see that that development area consists of approximately 2.85 acres of land. It's everything that is located on this plan just south of the red line, and the red line is a line of demarcation that separates the development area from what we refer to as the conservation restriction area. That area is approximately 6.56 acres of land, and that's the area that is proposed to be restricted. And as I think you know, there's been some discussions with the Water District as well as concerning a potential conveyance of that property, but there's no development proposed for the property that is situated north of that red line. We hadn't quite known where we might establish that boundary between the two properties, which is why, in our previous appearances before the board, we hadn't divided or shown a proposed division line on the site. And some of the feedback we received at both of the past meetings is that, when you look to the table of dimensional requirements and density standards, we were calculating all of those based upon the full site, approximately nine acres, more or less, and it wasn't really a true reflection of what we were developing on the site. So we've now condensed what we're calling the development area, and we're showing that on the bottom portion of the plan that's before you. The other thing you can see here is that we've actually redesigned the layout of the site on the whole. We received feedback from not only the board, but from residents at the last meeting, a meeting I did not attend, concerning the proposed layout, which included the town homes at the front of the site, closest to Riverneck Road, and the residences at the rear of the site, furthest from Riverneck Road. And as I understand it, the feedback that was received is that that was sort of inconsistent with the streetscape as it exists along the Riverneck Road neighborhood. Of course, that streetscape is primarily single-family homes, and you'd have single-family home, single-family home, single-family home, and then you'd have a succession of town homes. And so the request was, if there was any way that we could redesign the site so as to place those single-family homes closer to Riverneck Road, that would be appreciated. So we went back to the drawing board. You can see here that that's exactly what we've done. We've taken the residences and we've moved them closer to Riverneck Road. So when you come into the entrance driveway, the residences are immediately to your left. As you traverse the site, you go by three more residences, and then it's not until you enter the rear of the site, furthest from Riverneck Road, in an area that's really not especially visible from Riverneck Road, that you come upon the portion of the development where we're now proposing the town homes. So we have redesigned the site in that manner. It was also suggested, and of course, this comment was made in the context of the prior plans, but we've now redesigned those plans, that we show turning movements on the site, sufficient for any sort of larger vehicles, most notably fire trucks. And so you can see here in the top right corner of the plan, we have the turning movements as well. On the bottom left corner of the plan, we have additional turning movements at the entrance, showing that those fire trucks can indeed traverse the site. We have provided copies of this to the fire department as well, and we provided those even in advance of providing the copies to you a couple of weeks ago. So that has been added to the plan also. If we can go to the next plan, also a site plan, might be further up.
Other way.
Yep. It looks a whole lot like the plan we were just looking at, except it has a zoning table. There we go. So this is very similar to what you just saw. Again, it shows the dividing line between the portion of the property where the conservation restriction will be, and you can see the full extent of the property on this plan, because it's at a different scale. But maybe most importantly, it also now includes something that the board had requested last time, which is zoning tables. And we could have simply shown a zoning table based upon the development area, but we actually showed two zoning tables here, one based upon the full parcel and one based upon the development area. So you can see here, we've got all of the various density and dimensional controls that exist for the residential district. You can see that we've got lot width, lot depth, frontage requirements. We've got front, side, and rear lot setbacks, and then we've got building coverage, building stories, building height, and FAR, floor area ratio, that are shown here. And we've calculated those, both for the parcel on the whole, which is what we had given you before, but as well, and more importantly, the- But as well, and more importantly, the second table from the top is the development area only. So then that shows you the difference when you're applying these, these numbers simply to the 2.85 acre portion of the parcel that's proposed for development. The last set of plans, which are the ones that you had just scrolled to a moment ago. Again, there's 18 to 20 pages here. I won't go through them all because I know you have them. Certainly if members of the public have questions or they'd like to see a particular page in the plans, we can scroll. But these essentially are just revised floor plans, renderings, architecuals, elevations. In many respects, at least with respect to, let's say, the floor plans for the single family homes, the elevations for the single plant family homes, they're similar in many respects to what you received before. We've added some additional detail in terms of building materials because that was something, some feedback we had also received from residents as well as from the board, some greater details in terms of the fit and finish of these buildings. So we've added some of that information. But of course, most notably, the renderings have changed because of the, the redesign of the site and the layout of the site. So you can see that what's on the screen right now is showing you the area where the townhomes are proposed. Again, this is now further away from Riverneck Road as opposed to immediately adjacent to Riverneck Road. And you can see sort of in the top left corner of that plan, the, the single family homes that are sort of off in the distance, but closer, closer to Riverneck Road. I'm just going to touch briefly without going into great detail, although I'm certainly happy to, to the extent that the board has questions. I'm going to touch upon some of the things that you had requested that we consider or add to the plans at the last meeting. So you, of course, asked for that fire truck turnaround, which we provided. You asked for updated tables, which we provided. One thing we didn't show on the plans, and we're not, we're not opposed to it, but simply thought it might be too early in the process in light of the fact that these plans, of course, to the extent we receive your endorsement, go back before the Zoning Board of Appeals for a full comprehensive permit public process as required by the law. And that is a place structure. You had requested that we place a place structure somewhere on the, on the site. We have adequate green space and land area within the site to do that. We just weren't sure exactly where it ought to go in terms of trying to balance the need for that place structure with the need, for example, for snow storage areas or for adjustments to the site plan as it goes through further review, for example, by a peer review consultant, which is what we would expect to occur during a ZBA process. It always does. So we're go, we'll go on the record saying we're not opposed to adding a place structure to the site. We just haven't shown it and at this conceptual stage just yet. You had asked for us to show that dividing line between the conservation area and the development site, which we've done. You had asked us to ensure that there would be no building within the 50 foot buffer, that what's often referred to as the, the no build zone under your, your wetlands bylaw. We have adjusted the plan so that there is no building within that 50 foot no build buffer. You asked us to show snow storage areas in the plan. Again, those are showed on both, both versions of the site plan. You asked us to add a stop sign at the entry or exit to the site. We have shown not only a stop sign but also a pavement marking, which is the norm these days. Pavement line showing where, where vehicles should stop before they enter onto Riverneck Road. One other item that I think according to my partner's notes had been raised at the last meeting, but I wanted to proactively address it because it's not anything that's depicted in the plan, and that is a plan of action with respect to trash removal. So we've had some different discussions and again, we're happy to, to engage with the board and to respond to any feedback you might have. But there tend to be two schools of thought with respect to, to trash storage onsite and then trash removal. One is that there ought to be dumpsters, and dumpsters can be placed on the site. They can be placed typically within enclosures. Those enclosures can be screened. The problem with dumpsters is you have to put them somewhere. And so they're going to be presumably near some boundary, and you can guess that the neighbor who might be closest to that boundary is going to object to the placement of a dumpster in that close proximity to his or her property or residence or whatnot. Dumpsters, of course, can be sources for, for rodents, for, for other, other pests. And so the other option and the option that in my experience, at least with projects of this size, not if you have a 500 unit project or a 300 unit project, but with a project of this size comprised in part of single family homes and a part of townhomes, but all of which have garages, is to provide for typical receptacles. And so we're proposing that we would utilize receptacles for these residences, for the townhomes and for the single family homes. Again, if there's an objection to that, if the preference is to have there be a dumpster, we can consider placement of a dumpster onsite. If the concern, and this is one that I've heard from time to time, if the concern is that the dumpsters are going to be, the, excuse me, the receptacles are going to be left outdoors in somebody's driveway, and then everybody has to look at them as they drive by, we have solutions for that too. We can, of course, through things like condominium documents or rental agreements, we can require that they be moved inside. We can also build outdoor enclosures so that they can be enclosed at all times, so they're not visible to passersby. And there's some flexibility within the site plan to do that as well. So we talked about some of those options. Again, these are conversations that developers often have, applicants often have during the 40B process. We've done a lot upfront for this proposal because we're coming before you, asking you for a LIP endorsement. And we recognize that we're at your mercy and we're asking for your support. But this is the sort of detail that we would often get into during the proceeding before Zoning Board of Appeals as a project like this gets reviewed with respect to site design, site layout, engineering, stormwater. All of those reviews will need to occur as this project moves forward and often results in, in adjustments to the site to accommodate the feedback received from peer review consultants. So in a nutshell, that's what we've done over the course of the past five or six weeks. We had previously submitted to you for the June meeting, a summary of the other commitments, just as a reminder that we had made to you. We had discussed those. I had discussed those with you at the first meeting. You had asked us to meet again with the Housing Advisory Board after that initial meeting, which we did. We again received a positive vote from the, and recommendation from the Housing Advisory Board. They did request, and I've incorporated this into the correspondence, that we increase the affordability, and they made their vote contingent upon us increasing the affordability of the affordable units within the project, which we have done, both by offering a greater number of affordable units than we would be required to if this were a traditional 40B project, as well as by lowering the, the value of those units, the cost of those units in terms of percentage of area median income. We've done both of those things in an effort to try and address the concerns of this board and the feedback that we received from the Housing Advisory Board. So those commitments that we've made are contained within the prior correspondence that I submitted to the board back on, back on June 18th. I did see some feedback that was received today from David Hettison, who I will say, full disclosure, contacted me last week. I did attempt once to connect with him to no avail and then wasn't able to do so today, but I saw his correspondence that he submitted. He's made some recommendations to the board in terms of cost certification bond, for example. That's something that typically, again, gets discussed with the ZBA, but we're happy to discuss it with you. The concern there is that with projects of this sort, anything that, that arises under Chapter 40B, there is a post-permit, post-development process referred to as cost certification. Some of you may be familiar with it. The idea being that, as you know, one of the, one of the hallmarks of Chapter 40B projects is that there is a profit limitation placed upon a developer. This project adds a certain additional degree of complexity because we have multiple limitations of profit, one on the rental component and one on the ownership component. Once the project is completed, in the sense that the units have been rented out of the rental portion or the units have been sold in the homeownership portion, there's a cost certification that needs to be completed by an independent third party to report back to the state what our actual profit is. And that's based upon various norms that are contained in the Chapter 40B regulation. So we're obligated to, to proceed with that process to the extent the, the board is asking for a reasonable bond to ensure that that gets completed. The state typically requires a bond anyway, but we're certainly happy to provide a reasonable bond to the board to ensure that we'll complete it. It's a, it's an obligation of the program. So there were developers 10, 12, 14 years ago that tried to skirt those requirements. And after a few, few articles in the Globe, they, they, they were required, they, they modified the regulations and they've been more stringent. DHCD, now EOHLC, and enforcing those cost certification requirements. So we have no, no objections to Mr. Hettison's comments. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair. And again, our project team is here tonight. So to the extent that you have specific questions about the architectural plans, the elevations, we have a representative of our architectural team. To the extent you have questions about the site plans, we have a representative of our engineering team.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as Mr. Costa mentioned, we did receive the revised plans a couple of weeks ago. And so they, they were sent to the department heads again and other stakeholders. And we did get responses from several of those. I'm going to read what, what some of, what some of the issues were that was, that were brought up by them. First of all, the, the Fire Department noted that you have revised the turning in the, in the sweep path to comply with the State Fire Code and the Chelmsford Fire Department. However, they do have significant concerns about the site's grading. The steep grading, they say, could pose serious issues for their emergency vehicles. In addition, they said, they note that the proposal includes the use of vertical granite curbing at several locations, which also can be problematic for emergency vehicles and suggests you consider utilizing sloped or flushed curbing where possible. The Highway Department noted that of the 11 comments made on their April 2nd, 2024 letter to us, only one comment was, was addressed, that's the one of showing the snow storage on the site plan. So the other comments, they were not fully addressed. The site plan review, the dumpster pad and dumpster, which you've indicated might not be even applicable here. Utilities noted that this, that Riverneck Road is on a five year, was paved in 2022 and is a five year moratorium on opening. Pedestrian accommodations, overflow discharge on proposed underground chambers, a pump station and generator located within 50 feet, no build wetland zoning. Although it does note that no sewer pump station was shown on the plan. So again, that may, that may be resolved. But it wasn't commented on in the DPW's letter. And residential stormwater infrastructure should be included in the stormwater report in addition to the requirement that 6100 gallons per day of onsite, onsite treatment system for sewer would be required. The Board of Health notes the expectations of the groundwater protection zone would have to be met. And again, they mentioned about the septic system that would have to meet all requirements. And again, a dumpster if one is on site. The, as you mentioned, the Chelmsford Housing Authority did submit a letter. The Executive Director, David Hettison, said he was pleased that the affordable rental units will be at 60% of AMI and fine with the 80% for the homeownership units. But they, as you mentioned, he does suggest that the town consider requesting a bond that would be held pending completion of the, and acceptance of the cost certification. Again, as you mentioned, I mean, I kind of feel like that is something that the Zoning Board of Appeals should take care of. They're going to, they're the ones going to do all the little detail stuff, but he did mention that to us. Community Development did not have any additional comments. Conservation Commission did not have any additional comments. The Water District noted that this property is a direct competitor to Zone One and will need to follow the groundwater protection standard operating procedures, which include no private sewage allowed. And as you also, I think, mentioned, we did receive a letter from Ruth and Joel Luna about several issues that they also raised at the last meeting, having to do with snow storage, the proposed sewer, soils and stormwater infiltration and fencing for, for the turtles that are possibly on site. So those are the comments we have received. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Could you address how you envision addressing the Fire Department's concerns about the grade and the curbing?
Sure. So, so I saw the, the comments received from Fire, Highway and Health. Those were the three amongst those that were just referenced that had outstanding comments. Part of the challenge here is the unusual nature of the 40B process. And I don't know how familiar, I know certainly you've had your fair share in Chelmsford. I don't know how familiar your various departments and boards are with the, the typical 40B process versus the LIP process and whether they necessarily appreciate the fact that in the LIP process, all that we're asking this board for initially is an endorsement, but that ultimately there'll be a full and complete review of all aspects of the project as part of a typical ZBA comprehensive permit process. And the reason I say that is because many of the things that Fire, Highway and Health commented upon are things from which we would be seeking waivers, either full waivers or partial waivers, presumably in exchange for some other assistance we're providing to the town to address the issues. Waivers are part of the Chapter 40B process. So when we submitted our application for LIP endorsement, a requirement of your policy is that we submit a draft list of waivers. That, that was fine by us because we'd be required to do so. We will be required to do so when we make our submittal to EOHLC anyway. Waivers are local requirements. They can be requirements of your general bylaws, your zoning bylaws, rules and regulations of your boards, which we claim we cannot meet because this is being proposed as a 40B development. The prime example would be density, for example. This sort of density would not typically be permitted in the residential district, but we're seeking a waiver from the density requirement. That's the, waivers are sort of, again, the hallmark of Chapter 40B. So we saw the wave, we, we will be seeking a waiver and it's on our waiver list from, for example, the paving moratorium as it relates to the comment received from Highway. Highway talked about, excuse me, Health talked about groundwater protection and talked about septic requirements. Well, we'll be seeking use of sewer. Again, we had a brief discussion at the first session of the public hearing on this endorsement request on use of sewer. And to the extent that there are restrictions on the use of sewer, we would seek a waiver from those restrictions. And all of that was included in the list of waivers that we submitted with our initial package back in March or April to this board. Having said that, to the comments specifically from, from Fire regarding grading and, and the vertical granite curbing, certainly we can adjust the curbing. We propose vertical granite. That's sort of the gold standard when it comes to curbing. Alternatives are sloped granite curbing, which I understand can be easier sometimes on, on, on snow plows, can be easier on public safety vehicles. Some fire departments actually prefer Cape Cod burn. Cape Cod burn is the least expensive for a developer to install, so we will gladly oblige.
How about the grade?
Again, in most instances, it's.
I, I understand you can adjust the curbing. How about the comments about the grade?
Sure. So, so again, we've, we've had the site engineered. So from a grading perspective, we think it works. Now, the Fire Department is going to take issue if they, if the slopes are too steep and they need, require adjustment. Now, I didn't see them say that specifically in the letter. They weren't, they weren't, they weren't clear about.
They were very clear about it.
Great.
They could, they couldn't traverse the site? You want to?
Yeah.
If I may, part two to my question is going to be, if you wind up doing trash receptacles, how does that translate to the, the trash trucks being able to navigate that type of grade?
Sure. So Tim Power, PVI Site Design, Civil Engineer. The, if I recall the comment from the Fire Department, they asked that it was a 10% maximum slope in the design in their, in their letter. That's what we had on the, on our initial design as a maximum. Really, it's sort of the, the peak slope on the, on the road design. We may be able to flatten that out a little bit, but we have no intention of going over that. So that's within their written regulations, 10% max. And they actually, in the regulations further say you can go to 12% with careful review or some other language, but we don't intend to do that. So we're trying to hold 10% as a maximum and certainly flatten it out if for nothing else but just the aesthetic of the road itself. So we did, the plans we presented were in response to those comments from the Fire Department that you have now. So they have the, the current turning radiuses that they asked for. And we tried to address that with them as well, that that was our initial design and we intend to stay there and can work to flatten it out as we move, as Adam said, move through the ZBA process as well.
Okay, thank you.
And so you said that you're going to, you're requesting a waiver on the sewer, but the new plans, one of the comments was you're not showing any location for a pump station.
So correct. We haven't, all we produced are the two plans that we provided to you this evening.
There used to be a pump station, but now there's not.
There, did you have a pump station on the earlier version of the plans?
Utility plan, the original set.
Oh, there was, okay. But, okay. So we had talked about attempting to prepare a full new set for the board, including all utility plans, which we were unable to do and turned around to get it to, as you requested, two weeks before the meeting. So all we submitted for this meeting were the concept plans, again, the two versions that I walked through this evening. But I had forgotten, you're right, we submitted a full set that included utility plans. So certainly we can supplement, will be required to supplement both for EOHLC as well as for the Zoning Board of Appeals. We'd be required to provide the full plan set that we had provided to the board originally.
And do you have any insight into how you would address the concerns that are raised about, one, the location of the snow disposal and that flowing over into neighboring properties or into the conservation land? And two, the related concern from DPW about the overflow discharge, discharging onto neighboring properties?
Sure. So you, I'll let you speak to the discharge, but I'm going to speak to the snow storage for, for a moment. So we tried to show multiple snow storage areas on the site for sites of this sort. I've, I've often seen fewer areas shown for potential snow storage. We've shown areas throughout the site at all locations of the site for potential snow storage. Now, one way, many boards will have concerns that, as you say, if the, in the event of a particularly difficult winter, if we have storm after storm, that those snow storage areas can can become overwhelmed. And it's in those circumstances often that there tends to be overflow because those pile shifts get pushed and they get pushed and they get pushed. And before you know it, they're overflowing the boundaries of what we've shown on the site as potential snow storage areas. So one way to address that is through conditions of approval that would require that in the event that the snow storage exceeds a certain height or a certain limit, that we will truck the snow offsite to a disposal location. And that's something that is a fairly typical condition of approval for projects of this sort. We haven't really had to avail ourselves of it for many of the projects, private clients I represent, in recent years because we haven't had a difficult winter in a few years. But in circumstances where we do, I can appreciate that those areas can become overwhelmed. Do you want to address the issue, the other issue?
Sure. So the the question was overflow from any recharge systems and whatnot to the wetlands. So we'll have to certainly comply with the stormwater management standards because that's going to be applicable under the state regulations for conservation commission. And those, as you may know, require us to mitigate up to 100-year storm events on site. So we'll have to reduce all our runoff going off from there. We did do a preliminary design. We were comfortable, we could control the runoff from the site through a number of different recharge systems, not just one large one. We had some small, some medium and whatnot around the site. There may be some overflow out, but they'll have to have to show the burden of treatment, proper treatment, especially in the Zone Two to the drinking water well along the way.
Thank you. I have three more, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Are you, are you planning to not put any pedestrian access in here? Or is that another waiver? Or is there not room for it?
So we had that discussion as well. It's not necessarily that we're not planning on doing it. We haven't forgotten that that was, I think that was a request that the board had discussed, maybe even at the first meeting. I think there was some discussion of pedestrian access even under the former layout. We've not shown anything here. I mean, certainly we're not proposing in light of the site design that we would incorporate, let's say sidewalks. But could we provide paths? Could we provide walkways? That is certainly something we can do as the plans get further developed beyond the conceptual stage.
Okay. And going back to the Chelmsford Housing Authority letter, the other comment that was made in that was that the developer had mentioned several times to the Chelmsford Housing Authority that they were planning to rent some of the affordable units at a 10% discount to their employees. Is that the intent?
No, that that can occur under under the 40B guidelines. So and I've, this is something that David was was kind enough to email me directly with expressing the concerns that he had about some of what he understood based upon conversations that he had had with Ashok Patel, the the primary proponent of the project. Ashok had represented that he might want to utilize some of the housing for employees of his and that in in attempting to facilitate that, that he might consider, for example, price reductions. Number one, with respect to the affordable units, that's simply not how it works. The price point for affordable units, whether they happen to be homeownership units or rental units, is governed by EOHLC. There's a formula that gets applied and that determines the actual price of those units, rental prices or homeownership prices. With respect to the market rate units, it's a bit more confusing, but there are even restrictions there as well because you have to indicate for purposes of cost certification that you're not engaged in related party transactions unless those related party transactions are legitimate under the chapter 40B regulations and guidelines. And those guidelines are some 40 to 50 pages that provide great detail. They they explain, for example, that you can not only, if you so choose, be the developer of a project, but you could wear a second hat, you might be the realtor or broker for a project. And in that capacity, you could achieve an additional profit, let's say of 2% to 4%. But in the event that these for sale units or rental units were to be rented at less than fair market value, that would need to be accounted for in the cost certification. And essentially what it could mean is a developer having to pull money out of his or her own pocket at the end of the day because they've offered discounts to 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 friends or family. So it simply doesn't work with a 40B model like this. Certainly those individuals who happen to be employees of his could could enter into the lottery and they would be, they could be chosen the same way as anybody else. They have the same odds of being chosen from the lottery as anybody else. They don't get any favorable treatment. They can't get any favorable treatment under the Affordable Fair Housing Marketing Plan that will be required to submit to EOHLC and get approved as part of the 40B process. And with respect to the market rate units, again, there's no reason why he can't sell those to his employees or friends or family or whomever he chooses, but he's going to have to account for those sales as part of that final cost certification. I think that might have been what led in part to Mr. Heson's comment that he suggested there be a bond for the cost certification just to be sure that it gets done properly in light of some of his concerns relative to those conversations that he had with with Mr. Patel. But he made me aware of that about about six or seven days ago. And I've exchanged multiple emails and had a conversation with Mr. Patel and made him aware that that's not how, not how this can work with this sort of a project.
Thank you. And then my my last question is, I think many years ago, there was a planning board determination that the ideal site size for this site was like two or three units. But in addition to that, this is the third time that the conservation commission has adamantly opposed a development of this size in this area close to that conservation land and the habitats and things that have continued to grow and develop there. So I'm just, I, do you have any thoughts about that or any philosophy about that going forward?
So I I have a philosophy about it. Maybe not particular to this project, but this is a general comment about chapter 40B development. I mean, the reality of chapter 40B development is the Commonwealth has determined that there is a presumptive need for affordable housing and has created a process where developers, through a friendly process, a LIP project or through a less friendly project, a traditional 40B process, can request waivers from local requirements. I would say in my experience, and I do a fair amount of this, that waivers from wetlands bylaws and wetlands regulations are probably the most common of all waivers requested because many communities in the past 15 to 20 years have adopted more stringent bylaws and regulations than the state standard. So we have to comply for any project of this sort with the Wetlands Protection Act. That's the state act. It's been in existence for some 50 years. We are required to comply in full with the Wetlands Protection Act. What we can seek waivers from and we would seek some limited waivers from would be the local wetlands bylaw and any accompanying regulations. We're not seeking extensive waivers from those regulations. They were included in our waiver list. We're actually seeking fewer waivers or less onerous waivers or less comprehensive waivers than we were seeking even three months ago as part of this process because we backed off those buildings. So now there's no encroachment into the 50-foot, no, no build. But that's just the reality of chapter 40B development, that because of the nature of it, and when you're building a project that is denser than two or three homes on a site like this, you are going to be sort of testing some of the limits of the developable area of the site. I guess what I would say here is that I think that maybe with this project, more than most projects in which I'm involved, either on the municipal side or the private side, there is an added benefit of this conservation area of some 6.56 acres. The entire rear of the site, that's, you know, more than twice the size of the development area that is a natural heritage area that is going to be subject to a conservation restriction that is of interest, as I understand it, extreme interest to your water district and will be conveyed. And I think that that, to a certain extent, offsets those concerns. Does it eliminate those concerns? Is that going to, going to, going to buy the support of the of the conservation commission? I suspect not. I imagine that they will, as they have here, continue to oppose any any more dense development of this site than it needs to be. But again, my final comment will be, there is a permit that issued for this site for more than twice as many units and an order of conditions that issued for the site for more than twice as many units. So this is certainly a less onerous, less dense, less comprehensive project than what was approved some some 18 to 20 years ago.
Thank you.
Erin, you have any questions?
No, I think Virginia got all of mine.
Okay, thank you. George.
I rep, I'm on the housing advisory board, as you know. So we've met four or five times with these people. And each time they came back with different, you know, we've asked them to do various things. And they, we took two votes and one was a five to nothing vote in their favor and the other was four to one. So they've done everything they said they would do at our meetings. The people are very happy with the affordable properties and rates and, you know, percentages. So I think at the very least should happen is that they get a shot at what the board of appeals.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the room that would like to address the board about any part of this project and the application?
Good evening. Chris LaValle, Precinct 10 Town Meeting Rep. While I appreciate the applicant's changes to the plan, the the change in the layout to bring the single-family homes to the front, the change in the or the separation of the conservation area. The problem is, is that this separation of the conservation area, sent without decreasing the number of units essentially creates an effective increase in density. And that increase in density makes other smaller items less likely to happen and increases the likelihood of more waivers. For example, we see a lot less green space for kids to be playing since these are going to be families moving in. And that pushes people into the street. That creates a problem when you've got trash trucks, sanders coming into that neighborhood without a lot of green space. And I know that they mentioned there's going to be a playground, but I'm struggling to see where that would be located on that that layout. It also creates more problematic snow storage areas. As you notice, those two snow storage areas near the wetlands, it's not just overflow that creates the problem. It's the fact that there's any snow storage on the the green space outside of the contained stormwater system. One of the things that the planning board has started to do in areas like more sensitive areas is require that the snow storage be on pavement so that when the snow does melt, it gets collected by the the stormwater system and it does clean it before it's transmitted into the the aquifer area. We also note that 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 steep incline is going to be very dangerous in the winter. I would hate to be in that single-family home at the bottom of that curve. That might cause problems. And without a sidewalk there, it's going to be potentially hazardous. We've also heard that the owner has publicly stated multiple times in multiple iterations of the project over time that he does intend to sell or rent to employees. And while it may not be something he should be doing or there might be a process, I would recommend that the board keep an eye on that because he has publicly stated that multiple times in multiple iterations. So to me, that there, there are a lot of issues with this project and I would not recommend that the board recommend this as a LIP project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the board about this project?
Brian Latina, Precinct 9 Town Meeting Rep, 15 Jesse Roads is my address. Concern about American Disability Act. When there are more than four units being built, HUD requires you to have access. And where you're building affordable housing units, very typically, you might have elderly or people with disabilities wanting to use those affordable units. I couldn't tell from the pictures, I didn't have the layout, but project down the street from me, when they built one of these, had the parking garage on the ground floor, which meant that the sleeping areas, places that you would live in the in the property, were on the second floor. It's inaccessible. It's a violation of the ADA, in my opinion. Without any sidewalks and with a steep incline, I'd be very concerned about, again, the affordable housing aspect of this. So if your intention is to have a friendly housing project for people that can't afford a regular home in a regular neighborhood, I would suggest that you want to make it friendly to people with disabilities that may be in that situation. So if you're not having sidewalks and if you have a 10% grade and you put parking on the ground floor for the affordable units, I contend that you're not allowing disabled elderly, somebody with a walker, wheelchair, or in my case, special needs son, trying to haul him up a flight of stairs or two, as I see, these are like triple deckers in my view. That means you're building property in a wetlands on a hill that's not accessible for the people, very people that you would expect to be there, elderly and disabled. And from that perspective, I'd be very concerned at what I'm seeing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Linda Jones, 242 Riverneck Road. This project, I feel, is too dense for this area and I'm disappointed to see the developers still claiming 9.41 acres when the Chelmsford Water District is going to be purchasing five acres of that land. They've already received the the drinking water supply protection grant for it in July and a purchase and sales agreement is being written up already. So their actual acreage total would be 4.41 acres once that five acres is sold, which will greatly increase the the gross density of the project. Developer also claims to have sewer capacity from the previous permitted comprehensive permit. And in the final comprehensive permit dated August 29th, 2008, on page 14, number 79, it clearly states, "Nothing in this decision shall constitute an approval for connection to the Town of Chelmsford Municipal Sewer. The applicant shall be responsible for obtaining such approvals from the applicable municipal offices, municipal officials. No building permit shall issue without the approval of the Department of Public Works, or division as appropriate, and the applicant shall pay any and all fees for such sewer connections as may be determined by the town and shall conform to all regulations." And finally, I'm concerned, as other people have been about information we got at the neighborhood meeting. Mr. Patel stated he he wants to rent these units to his employees, rent the houses or sell the houses to his employees. He mentioned that he has 90-day employees. They come over to this country for 90 days on visa that work for him. And I'm concerned about what kind of environment that's going to be for our neighborhood. It's an unconventional 40B setting and one that's no benefit to the neighbors, the neighborhood, nor the town of Chelmsford. The idea of having revolving door residences unsettling, to say the least. And I feel that if the select board were to approve this LIP, it would set a precedent for future 40Bs that would not be in keeping with the true meaning of affordable housing and would be detrimental to the town of Chelmsford. And for these reasons, I would ask the board to deny the LIP for 243 Riverneck Road, 40B. Let the land sale with Chelmsford Water District go through. Let them apply for state or federal funding and then to go before the ZBA for the the comprehensive permit process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Luna, 10 Carter Drive. Spoke last time and a number of the things, the issues that I raised then are still applicable. Today, they aren't changed by the change in the plans and that sort of thing. Ruth submitted, Ruth was the one who submitted the letter. And I'm not going to get into the into the details of that particular letter. I will, I want to keep things at a very, very high level with regards to what it is that you're going to be doing. And you're going to be making a decision about whether you want to endorse this. Right, your decision is not whether this goes on to the ZBA or not. Your decision is not whether you approve of this or not. Your decision is, are you going to endorse this? In other words, are you going to say that the town of Chelmsford thinks this is a good idea? And I think that there are a number of things that you've seen and heard already that that suggests, I think, very strongly that this is not a good idea. For example, the conservation commission has very clearly stated in their original comments, and they've made no changes to it, that they ask you not to endorse this project. And I will add that the issues for, by which it was denied by the commission was against the Wetlands Protection Act, not against the bylaws. So the, this commission will have issues with respect to the Wetlands Protection Act with regards to this project. Another one is the the question of sewer. And in that, the continuing question is, is there going to be sewers? Are there going to be septic? Obviously, the Chelmsford Water District doesn't want septic. It sounds like the applicant is thinking sewer, but the, there is no, you know, at least not under our established means for getting sewer permission. Are they going to be getting it? So it would only have to be through waivers and so forth. And then the last one is the question of livable community. Is this creating a livable community? The the entire site, pretty much as you saw the demarcation of the 2.85 acres, is going to have, according to the comprehensive management permits, going to have a five-foot chain going to have a five-foot chain link fence around it. So residents are not going to be able to go outside of that area for open space. So any open space is going to have to be within that area. And I don't think that creates, at the density that it's at, a really livable community. And then also, the issue that Mrs. Jones raised, I think is a very good one, which is that your intent is, your desire, at least under this policy, is to encourage affordable housing. But affordable housing ideally is for a community. That is, for people to come and to live there, that you want to be part of Chelmsford community. But if you're having people who are cycling in and out every 90 days, that is not the intent, at least of what you're looking to provide in terms of affordable housing, I would think. So the very, I noticed in reading through your policy that you don't actually have a criterion by which you decide whether you endorse or you don't endorse. And that would be one thing I would recommend, is that you revisit that policy to put in some kind of criterion. The criterion, I think, that you probably are using that is in the back of your minds is the one that is in our special permit criterion. That is, that you look to see, do the adverse effects of something outweigh the benefits? If the benefits outweigh the adverse effects, then you approve it. If the adverse effects outweigh the benefits, you do not approve it. And I would suggest you use that as your criterion in this case. The benefits that you get by, again, this is not the question of, are you approving the 40B? Because that's for the ZBA. It's your decision, are you going to endorse it? And so the benefit for your endorsement is that there's two additional affordable units and the reduction from 80 to 60% of the AMI. That is what you're getting for the risk of endorsing something that the Concomis said they do not want. For costs that likely the town is going to incur because of the waivers that are going to be requested for the sewerage. And then also, the negative effects of creating a community that doesn't really have the space for itself and also is potentially not even the kind of a community that we would consider to be residential, in a residential area. So I think for those reasons, if you weigh it that way, I think it's very reasonable for this board to say that you're not saying that you are against this project or against it going to the ZBA. What you're simply saying is you don't endorse it. You don't say, "We favor this." And I think that would be, given everything that we've seen and heard, I think that is the most reasonable thing, kind of decision for you to make. And so I ask you to make that decision, to not endorse this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board?
Linda, you, 254 Lowton Road. I have noticed that there are still some hangups regarding the fire safety of this resident, especially in the town houses area. In particular, despite the now edits to the plans to show that fire engines can actually enter and exit this housing area, I still have concerns about the road widths, because if you think about in the time of an emergency, you're not just going to have fire engines and first responders going in and out. You're also going to have, well, their own residents' cars going in and out. And it most likely won't be very organized, given how it's a state of emergency. I also noticed in the plans, there is no indication of any placements of fire hydrants, in which I feel that should be reconsulted again, because even if the engines can make their way all the way back to the townhouses with no problem, there is still the question of where are they going to actually get the water to fight any fires that happen there? Furthermore, regarding the townhouses, being all the way back in this residential area, I feel it puts them at risk, especially because these will be areas where residences who cannot afford regular housing or may have, may require accommodations will be living and they are at most at risk because they're the farthest back in this area and therefore will take the longest time for the fire engines to make their way there, as well as having the longest time of egress from this neighborhood if a conflagration spreads from the townhouses to the residences up front. I understand that the single-family housing is put closer to Rivermail Road for aesthetic purposes. However, I feel that is secondary to the fact that lives may be at risk, as well as the fact that it is showing that the, less, sorry, my apologies, as well as the fact that it may not be representing values that this town community wants to represent, because of the fact that the more affordable housing for those who may not be able to have the privilege of having single-family housing is in a more at-risk area and also away from public eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, is anyone on Zoom?
Ashak Patel is on Zoom, but I don't know if he wishes to speak. He's got his hand raised now, so yes, he does.
Okay, Ashak. Good.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I was supposed to be flying back in town on Sunday. Our flights have been delayed for two days. I'm stuck in Europe trying to get back. Actually, might be able to fly out tomorrow. Anyways, thank you for taking the time to give me a few minutes to speak. When we started this project about two years ago, maybe a little longer than that, we actually met with community development. We met with town manager. And I simply asked the question, "Can we develop something here that may be less dense than what was there before? And perhaps the project can yield some meaningful housing for the community?" And both Paul, Evan Bolensky, and many others at the town at the time said that that's a fantastic idea, I think, that can work, given that, you know, we're in such desperate need of housing. So we start on this journey to reduce the project's scope greatly and still put together something that's meaningful on the development cost side to make work. So I think our journey up to this space has been at the good intended directions of everybody that's involved in this process. I know there's a lot of comments made regarding employee housing and whatnot. So I've already told our attorney to make a statement in writing that whatever market rates are for the rental and for the sale of the units will be at market rate. If one of my relatives or one of my employees happens to buy the home, they will buy it at what the market rate is, right? That's fine. We will have a full audit process. We'll comply with whatever audit process you want us to comply with. That's not an issue. We will do so. So that is, I'm not worried about that. I know people have talked about, hey, what kind of community will this be when you have people rotating out or something, right? Well, in any apartment community, any rental community, you always have the risk of people rotating out every 12 months. So this will be subject to the same sort of apartment community rules. If people want to live there longer, they're welcome to live there longer. If they have to move because of certain reasons, they'll have to move. We can't control, but they'll be all at market rate. That will be assured through whatever audit process the town has put in place or the 40B or the LIP program requires. We hope that this support can be given so that we can further develop the necessary plans to get them to the appropriate agencies as time comes and get a project together. We have taken a lot of time and understanding in adjusting the plans to what the neighbors said during the neighborhood meetings, what the town feedback has been. And we feel that the version that is before you today is probably the best product of those exercises. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I be heard, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I'd just like to briefly address a few of the comments that I heard made beyond what Mr. Patel has said. I honestly don't know how the board might vote on this proposal, but I want to be sure that however you do, you have the facts straight. And I heard a few statements that I think are misstatements. I don't think that they were intentional misstatements, but I want to be sure you understand what's before you. A couple of residents commented on the development area versus the conservation area. One of them had said that we're now providing less green space. And another had said that we're claiming nine acres when really we should only be claiming four, because there are already talks underway and the PNS is in the midst of being drafted with the water district for approximately five acres. There's some truth to that. I had said before that we have been in talks with the water district and we have committed to the water district to convey a portion of the subject property. We're not misrepresenting anything to the board. The site today is approximately nine acres. That's how we showed it in the very first plans we submitted to you five months ago. It was aptly noted by one of your members, or maybe a few of you, that we weren't actually developing out nine acres. And so it was a bit of a misconception when you reviewed the table of dimensional requirements to divide the number of units we're proposing into nine acres when we're not utilizing nine acres. So we were asked, and we have now, shown a line of demarcation of division between what we're referring to as a conservation area and the area that we're referring to as the development area. It's actually less than a nine acre versus four acres. It's nine acres versus 2.85 acres, which is our development area. So in doing that, we're not reducing the green space. We're not showing anything less. In fact, other than simply switching the locations, more or less, of the single-family homes and the townhomes, we haven't condensed the area that we're proposing for development any differently than what was before you six weeks ago or what was before you three or four months ago. Comments were raised and concerns about ADA compliance. So certainly, that's not something from which we can seek waivers. ADA compliance is required for all developments. Certainly developments that are receiving state or federal funding. The rule, as it relates to affordable housing projects, for the affordable units in particular, is that we are required to retrofit units to the extent that they haven't initially been constructed to accommodate individuals that qualify for protection under the ADA. That's something that is often done with affordable housing developments. It's not true that you simply can't build a two- or a three-story townhome or townhouse structures that have garages at the entry level, because it would be a violation of the ADA. Otherwise, you wouldn't see those types of townhomes anywhere. The rule, the requirement, is that you need to provide accommodation so that, to the extent that an individual that acquires one of those units, that purchases or rents one of those units, requires an accommodation under the ADA that you can provide them, as you're legally required to do, with the assistance that they need to be able to utilize the unit as an individual without the same sorts of disabilities would be able to, will comply fully, will be required to. It's a mandate under Chapter 40B. It's a mandate under state and federal law. The final point that I'll make is maybe just restructuring the conversation or offering maybe a different perspective on your role as a select board with respect to your LIP process and procedure. The gentleman that spoke, one of the last gentlemen to speak, said, "The question is, is this a good idea? You're being asked to endorse a project. If you're endorsing it as a select board, is this a good idea?" I would state it somewhat differently. I think it's not just reviewing this project in a vacuum. I represent select boards, too. I represent municipalities, too. Most of them would prefer not, that 40B wasn't the law. They would prefer not to approve Chapter 40B projects. And so if you ask most of them, even those that I've represented, and there are many of them, giving LIP endorsements, "Is this a good idea?", many of them would say, "Well, we'd rather it weren't an idea at all." But the law requires that 40B housing be developed. And so I would suggest to you, the question is, "Is this a better idea than the alternatives that could exist?" And you don't have to think that much outside of the box for a project or a site like this, because we know the alternatives, because you approved, or your zoning Board of Appeals approved, an alternative a decade and a half, two decades ago. And it was a project with 48 units, much more dense than what you have here. And so that is a, that was a reality for this site for the better part of two decades. It could be a reality for this site again. We could have come forward. We can still come forward and propose greater density for this site. But as Mr. Patel himself said in discussions with the town, we wanted to pursue something that was more cooperative, understanding that it was still going to be a greater density than what is in the surrounding neighborhood, but something that is a lesser density than what was approved for Princeton properties. The reality here is that there is another route. And one of your residents suggested, "No, make them go and make an application to the state, get their subsidy, and then proceed before the zoning Board of Appeals." We can do that. We recognize that that's the path for us if this board doesn't issue an endorsement. But the commitments we've made to this board are commitments we've made as part of the LIP process. It's because it's a straighter, more direct path for us to go from here to EOHLC and then to your zoning Board of Appeals. If we have to go through mass housing before we get back to the zoning Board of Appeals, it may be that, not just that you're not getting the same number of affordable units or the same extent of affordability, it could be that it's a differently designed project. It could be that it's not a mix of single-family homes and rentals. It could be that it's all ownership, meaning that you don't get the benefit of the rental units counting on the subsidized housing inventory. It could mean that it's at a greater density. So I don't put those things out there as threats, because we haven't even developed a concept plan for something other than this. This is what we put before the board. I'm just telling you that that's the reality of LIP versus something different than a LIP, something that is a more traditional Chapter 40B. So we hope that when the board looks at what's in front of it, recognizing that there is opposition from a number of residents, and we've heard some opposition from the Conservation Commission, doesn't surprise me. We still think that this is a better project for the site than what was approved 20 years ago. We think it's a better project for the site than what could have been proposed and still can be proposed as an alternative to what you've got here. And we hope the board will consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've heard all the comments that we're going to get and feedback from the applicant and from residents. I'm assuming everybody's ready to vote on this?
Going to close the public hearing?
Yes, right. So first, we need to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Reporting in progress.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Okay. All right, I mean, we can begin discussion now about how we want to move forward with it. Endorse or not endorse, as had been mentioned by several people. Okay. So anybody want to start the discussion? Now is the time you can say how you feel about it and how you would want to move forward with it. Who would you want to start?
If I had to vote tonight, I'd endorse it.
Okay. Pat?
I'm torn on this one, but if I had to vote tonight, I would vote against it. It's still just force-fed to me and there's just not enough. It's just not, it's not worked through far enough. And I understand the complexities of not endorsing the LIP and, you know, the possible things that could come as a result of that. But I just can't say that everything I see in the plans and everything is complete enough or thought through enough for me to go ahead and endorse this project the way it is right here today.
Okay, thank you.
I'm inclined to also not endorse it. I think that, given the number of issues that we have from our departments in town, combined with the number of waivers that they would be looking for, it's too much for me.
Okay. Janu?
I appreciate the rework that went into the plans. I, and I understand that this is less bad than what we had before. I still feel that the cons outweigh the pros. And I am, I'm very concerned about still some of the issues that have been raised, even if waivers are approved. I'm concerned about that. So at this point, I can't get behind endorsing it.
Okay. I mean, I guess what I would say, kind of echo what some of the last comments that were made by Mr. Costa, and that being, I mean, this is better than what we've seen on this property before, for sure. Even better than what we've seen, what we saw earlier. Particularly getting more affordable units than what would be on a traditional 40B. However, there are significant restrictions and risks that we take by doing this. So I think I would vote with, probably against it also. So if we could have a motion.
Can I make the motion in the affirmative?
Well, you know how I feel about that.
I know, I know, I know you do, okay. I will go ahead then and not do that. I will make a motion to not endorse the local initiative project for the proposed affordable housing project for 23 units at 243 Riverneck Road, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to not endorse. All those in favor of the motion not to endorse? And those opposed to the motion not to endorse? Okay, we have a 4-1 vote. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for... coming before us and good luck with your project, however it goes, however it moves forward. Okay, next on our agenda is discussion about license at Canissa. Paul, do you have anything on that to tell us?
Well, this is what I know, Madam Chair. We've received no information since the last meeting, although the applicant agreed to come back.
Okay, folks, if you could leave quietly, we still have a meeting going on. Thank you very much.
The applicant agreed to come back and provide an update to the board at this meeting. And there's nobody on the Zoom call, and I don't see anybody in the room to speak to this project, which is rather disappointing.
It is very disappointing, yeah. I mean, after they had said that they definitely would have something for us by this meeting. So any thoughts on how we want to move forward on this? Go ahead, Virginia, were you going to say something?
I just don't remember. Did we say come back in August and they said, "Okay"?
Yeah, he said he would be back at this meeting.
They said if they wouldn't be back, they would at least give something to the town manager to report to us.
So my only other thought is to just send him a formal correspondence that signed off that said we need some kind of feedback by our next meeting?
Well, I mean-
And if we don't, I mean, possibly let them know, if we don't get it, we're going to consider revoking the license, or we'll have a discussion around it.
Right, I mean, we'd have to start a public hearing process for that. Okay, I mean, I guess we can give them, yeah, two more weeks, but I mean, I wouldn't go any further than that before we start that process.
No, but I would, I would give them like a formal written correspondence.
Sure.
All right, we'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay, now, did anybody remind them about their promise before this meeting? I mean,
No.
You really shouldn't have to. It was only three weeks ago, so. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. I guess we handled that without Pat's presence, so we'll move on next to town manager goals. So this is what I have, I came up with from our discussion from a couple of weeks ago. I tried to catch everything and put it in here with comments as I saw fit. We can go through them, you know, one at a time and see if there are any comments.
Yeah, I'm just trying to move it over.
Okay. Yeah, our friend on Princeton Street, we're going to ask him to come in at our next meeting. Otherwise, we're going to get top on him.
He was supposed to be here tonight, though, right?
Yeah, nothing.
Nothing at all?
All right, so we're on to our goals. You know, a couple of questions. I just want to be sure that I captured everything that we talked about. If anybody has any comments about rewording or adding adding anything else. And in prior years, we have set different tiers for for different goals. Do we want to do that on these? And if so, what is going to be the tiers and what are going to be the different priorities? And on some of them, where, I guess especially the ones that are particular to the select board, perhaps assigning a select board member to take the lead on those, I think maybe would be helpful at this point. So.
In terms of, in terms of tiers, I don't think that it really did much for us, except say, these are the priorities. And I I honestly think we took care of that by plumping a bunch under government focus areas and a bunch under, you know, support to board and committee initiatives. Those are all kinds of the ones that we're tracking and the ones that aren't under those headings are pretty much ones that we're going to go work and do or create. That's kind of how I feel about it, but.
Okay.
We can revisit that question after we go through it, whether there's a different way people want to prioritize it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, as far as the layout of them, I tried to kind of put them in some kind of priority. You know, not that they have to be very specific that way, but a lot, I think, on the first page are more critical than the ones on the second page. So as far as the fiscal management and visibility, some of these are ongoing. The fee structure, Paul, I'm assuming that staff can-
Are already started.
Okay, good. And I only put the select board on as one of the responsible parties on that one.
Because it'll come before you.
Right, because we have to make the final decision on that. Legislative earmarks and grants, I mean, those are pretty much ongoing. The legislative earmarks are also put down for the select board since we do meet with our legislative delegation about those. As far as the marijuana one, I know, Pat, this was one that you had suggested. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this. I kind of agree with what one of the residents said earlier, that we have talked about this several times at town meeting. I don't know at this point if we want to do it again.
When's the last time, when's the last time it came up for town meeting?
What, was it about three years ago, Paul?
Yeah, at least, yeah. Yeah, I think it was-
Wasn't it last fall?
No.
No, I don't think so.
No, it's been several years.
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to think, it was pre-COVID.
No, it wasn't, because we went out and visited the place in Lowell. This was way, this was after COVID, when the planning board brought the zoning article forward to town meeting.
Cannabis.
Okay. So I didn't realize it had been three times in front of time. I am generally kind of interested, actually, in reopening the discussion, but I didn't realize it had gone three times and been, so that's kind of interesting.
Discussion that will go around it, but when I drive down Route 3 and I see billboards and I walk at lunchtime down the street from my office, and I walk right by a place. You know what I mean? It's like, I think we're missing the boat, and because it's so close.
If they're everywhere.
We could zone it in the right area. You know, I just think we're missing the vote on possible revenue that we should be taking in. It's just become so prevalent that why, why should we miss the vote on this? I don't get it.
Yeah, I kind of agree. And I mean, there's one, if there's one on every border of, there's one right in Lowell, and I mean, they're right.
To me, that's a little more reason why we don't need to.
Well, but we're not getting the revenue from those.
Yeah, but there's not as much revenue anymore, you know. Well, I think when they first opened-
Could we discuss what possible revenues could be?
Can you use the microphone so people can hear you?
Could we, you know, could we have the town manager maybe look into seeing what possible revenue stream could come of it and have a discussion about it?
So, like, my concern right now is that we're getting into the deliberation of the goal. And I don't think we should be doing that at this point. I think we should be deciding whether it's on the list or not. I mean, I'm kind of, absent any other discussion, I'm in the same place as I I'm not sure there's a whole lot of utility in revisiting this, but if there are board members that feel strongly about it, then we should at least schedule a discussion. That's my feeling.
So, Pat, do you want to take the lead on that and maybe put something together? And we can put it on maybe one of our September meetings to talk about it again? I mean, it wouldn't, obviously, we wouldn't have time to put it on our, on our fall town meeting, but that's probably kind of rushing it anyway. But just to get a sense for what you think the, or, you know, what other communities are getting-
I'm asking for the information is what I'm asking for, to, you know, go forth and make those decisions. So I don't, I mean, what kind of information or assistance could we get from the administration?
We can look into it. I just looked, the town meeting adopted the marijuana bylaws and general and zoning bylaw at the October 16, 2017 town meeting. It doesn't seem impossible that it's almost seven years ago, but that's, that's, looking at the code, that's what is reported.
I was on the board when we did the last vote, and it was after COVID, and we went out to the site in Lowell, and Sue Rosa and Pat.
But I don't think it ever made it back to town meeting, is my-
Yes, it did.
I don't remember that it did.
We voted on the article here.
Okay, we can look into it. We'll look into it. But the short answer is, is, but that's, that's when it, that's when it was codified in Chelmsford. I'll look to see if there was a reconsideration since then.
So we should get, we should get that fax.
I can gather data.
The other thing I would like, if you're going to go ahead and get data, the other thing I would like to know is if there's any data available on where this has gone in terms of, you know, the CBD industry, when they were selling CBD oils and stuff like that, that all went to mail order, a lot of it, and the brick and mortars kind of were not needed. So and I understand, like, you can't, you can't ship alcohol into Massachusetts, but can you ship, can you ship marijuana? Like, is, I want to know too where the future trend is going to go. If we put all this energy into revisiting brick and mortars, are the brick and mortars going away like everything, every other brick and mortar is going away?
We know that, we know the state just adopted new amendments on local community approvals and what the communities can receive in exchange for that. So we can, we can find that out. I'm sure also talking with council, we can find out the current status as well, since they represent 100 communities.
Right, and maybe find out what some of the surrounding communities, how much they are-
We can also find out revenue as well, because that's public. So, yeah, we can, we'll do the digging and-
It's in data, that's fine.
We'll report it back, sure.
Okay. But before you leave that section, Pat, the ones that say ongoing, I mean, can we assign like like grant, so legis, I know it got translated to legislative earmarks, and my question was, when I brought it up, are there other legislative opportunities that come up? And I don't know the answer to that. But can we at least, like, put it onto the quarterly reporting? Maybe it's part of the goals reporting or something else, so that we're intentionally saying, "Here's the grant opportunities we pursued this quarter", right? Because usually it comes up at the end of the year when we're doing Paul's performance review, and we say, "Oh, look, we got $600,000 in grants this year." And I think the whole idea of this was to get more intentional, if we could. And then the early notification of financial issues, part of the comment that I had made there was like, we were, at least I was looking for kind of a discussion around what's emerging in the risk mitigation, and hopefully having at least one of those discussions before we go into tri-board. So it's not like already done and-
Let me respond to those two issues. On the grant, on the grant thing, I think I sent the board an email asking,
Right, right.
informing the board that we, if you want them reported here, I can do that, and I'll include it when we do the quarterly goals report. In terms of the revenue thing, I had a department head meeting on last Thursday, August 1st, and I've asked department heads to give me an initial projection by September 1st of their need. So with the intent, and the message was, is, look, because of the extraordinary circumstances that we're going into, you know, you saw what happened today in the markets, the state also reported the revenue was down just July from last July, and we also know the uncertainties ahead in terms of the initial projection we did a few months ago. So the message was delivered to department heads, "We need this. We're serious", and the intent is to give it to the select board, so that the first time they see it isn't when we walk into the tri-board meeting in December, that we're really hitting them into the fall. Most likely, you know, a major discussion certainly around November 1st, you know, but certainly information even before then, because it is going to be, you know, very critical where we're at. So yes, I basically want to ensure the board that that's already underway as well.
I'm going to have the same kind of comment everywhere. We have ongoing, like, what are we going to, what kind of reporting frequency do we want?
But we'll give, we'll give quarterly goals reports as we always have.
I know we do, but-
But if there's something more current, we'll come in with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else under the fiscal management and visibility that we need to discuss? All right. The ARPA funding, I think that's pretty straightforward. We have to do it by the end of, we have to do the-
Christine, Christine Clancy and I have scheduled the next meeting to present the request for-
With the ongoing, can we continue the monthly reporting? I think that's important.
Ongoing monthly, yep. She'll also have the monthly report, and I think the board would be pleased, the progress that we're making.
Okay. On the process improvements, I actually had a note that we, that we had had this under fiscal management, but I guess it could, you know, maybe we can leave-
It's okay where it is.
Okay. I don't know if there's any other comments or tasks under that.
Well, again, my only question is, Paul, is there, is there like a mark in the sand where we say, "Okay, the departments have done a gap analysis, and these are the ones that rose to the top"?
Yeah, it probably will be later in the fall. We're, as you know, may know, we're working on one right now with the Board of Health and-
So maybe Q2?
Yeah, probably.
Or is that too sporty?
Yeah, but I would say by the end of the calendar year, the end of second quarter, sure.
Would be the, the gap analysis? And then we could decide from there what kind of reporting frequency makes sense.
All right, so we're stormwater and drainage. That's just, all that's carryover from last year. Any other tasks we want under there or?
Is the board okay with continuing the monthly reporting? I thought that frequency was-
Yeah.
I mean, some of it might not change as fast as monthly, but some of it does.
Yeah, I mean, we always get the sewer report every month, so, yeah, some of them are going to be a lot-
Right. And some activity, we notified the board that we sent out an RFP for the smoke testing and so forth, yeah.
Infrastructure, roads and sidewalks. I mean, one thing I noticed, I noted on that is that I like it that we have something posted on the website about what's coming up. I think the residents really like that. They can kind of look at that and know if something's going to be happening in their neighborhood or on their street. So, you know, it's, I think that's really good. I don't know if there's anything else that we want to add on that.
What frequency do you think that should be, Paul?
I mean, it depends on the season of the year, but I mean, during this season, we're putting monthly notices out, as was noted in the manager's newsletter.
The reporting here.
Oh, reporting here. I mean, Christine's here once a month. I think it depends. I mean, I think it probably every couple of months in the construction season is when we'll, we can update you, sure.
Okay. Underground utilities. I mean, that's a, that's a tough one.
I've already initiated it to council. They're looking into it, believe it or not. We, Rick Holland is the one working on it. I sent information to him and some background last week, so again, I'm hoping in the not-too-distant future, perhaps early fall, we can have a direction. So, yeah, we're working on it.
This is mainly geared towards-
The center.
The center of underground utilities. I'm glad to hear Rick is still there.
Okay, under the town government focus areas, we have several topics here, some of which are going to be ongoing for a while, some of which we do see an ending point on.
So the 54 Richardson Road, I think we were trying to do the bi-monthly reporting based on the test sampling cycle.
Yeah, with the quarterly, the quarterly sampling, yeah.
That was quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so this whole section would probably be maybe the ongoing items, I'm just thinking, are those more like quarterly, just bring us up to date on where things are?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on other topics under that? That, that goal?
I didn't understand what the consolidated regional services, I don't remember that discussion, I'm sorry.
I think we talked about that maybe on a couple of different levels. I mean, it kind of was under the stormwater, I think.
Yeah, we're always looking at regional opportunities, yeah. And so again, we'll update you if opportunities arise.
I remember it under stormwater. I just didn't, and it's there. I just didn't know what it was here.
I mean, we can get rid of it. I mean, Paul always tells us about any regional issues or regional services that we, that we can join with others. I mean, could we get rid of it or or not?
I'd prefer to leave it there just for, you know-
To keep it in front of you?
Or should it just be under sewer, stormwater, drainage?
Okay.
Well, because it might be-
It could go under that too.
It's both.
Right.
It's fine.
I mean, I think it's pretty clear. It's going to take a regional effort to get our sewer stuff under control and a few of those things, so.
Yeah, but there might be other, other areas where we can regionalize too, so. All right, the strategic plan. I mean, we could put that under the board and committee initiatives, but I felt like it did deserve its own own segment, because that is kind of a strong, what we're going to be, what's something that's going to have a strong focus for the for the next year. So everybody okay with leaving it the way it is?
Yeah, it's got to be completed in the fourth quarter, yeah.
Okay. And the board and committee initiatives, we have many of those.
My only comment there, Pat, was the MBTA zoning support, given that we did get a response back from the state within the last 24 hours. Do we, do we want to put, instead of Q2, do we want to say like Q1 slash Q2 and kind of get it? Because we have to get the developer engaged and is Q2 the endpoint?
The endpoint, yeah. To me, the endpoint would be December, yeah. But it's got to be, because it has to be submitted by the end.
Right, but we can start it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, any of them, we can, we can start now. I just want to clarify, and, you know, I put in the USA 250th Birthday Celebration, which to me would mean 2026, but something that you had sent, I think, was geared to a- towards 2025, the start of the revolution.
Right, the, the grant money is out there now, is, is, has to be expended by, which there's a information session coming up on, has to be expended by December, June 30th, 2025. So that applies that there might be additional funding for the following year coming up. The reason for that is Lexington and Concord happened in 1775.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And that's, that really is what drove all this, because they need a huge amount of money for Lexington and Concord.
Folks in the, in the audience, if, if you could either.
So that's, so that's where. So anyway, so yes, we're, we're, we're working, we're already on it, we've already circulated to department heads. There are a couple of people, including myself, who are gonna be on the grant call.
For 2025?
For 2025, and then obviously we'll, we'll look to see what they may allow in terms of 2026, or if there's going to be another round in 2026.
But is that, is the 2025 grant, is that specifically for the revolution?
It's, it, well, it's interesting, it's, it's, it's to commemorate the nation's 250th, but it, it kind of get, broadens out from that, because not every part of the state goes Lexington and Concord area. So they said, well, it can be that, or if you have that innovative, or information or unique things that has happened in your community over the 250 years, like if you invented the light bulb or something, and, or the rocking chair or some, anyway, the bottom line is they're, they're trying to devote attention and funding towards the uniqueness of being the 250th anniversary of the country, and therefore they're allowing a little more latitude, uh, and trying to fund projects for the year ahead. And again, what they said in the initial grant round is, is that the monies had to be expended by June 30th, 2025, so, which, which again works fine for Lexington and Concord, but.
Exactly, right.
And it may work fine for our walk to Lexington and Concord, but, but again, if you're celebrating in the parade, if you're out there and you did something with the Fourth of July parade in 2025, they're gonna be like, well, this isn't the 250th, this is the 249th.
Right.
Um, so, again, but we're also talking to the senior center and other, other things, so, anyway, we're working on it. So, so yeah, this, this is fine in terms of the timeline, we're, we're already working on it, and we hope to meet the whatever deadlines they have, and then, and before we submit anything, we're gonna come to you and say, look, this is what we're asking for.
Okay.
What's your input? Do you have any suggestions or edits?
Okay, and I think it does make sense to kind of have the parade committee taking the lead on that, correct?
Yeah, but we've also, like I said, we've, we've reached out to the cultural, you know, the Center for the Arts, the Senior Center and others, library.
Okay. Anything else on, under that topic, board and committee initiatives? Everybody okay with the other subtasks?
What is the, the 40B safe haven? Are we saying we're gonna have be safe like at the end of the quarter?
We're hoping, we're hoping, we, we're continuing to submit and, and work with council to get approval of those units that have already been approved locally. It, it's a different process than 40B, it's the, it's the local, uh, process in terms of local action units. So we're gonna keep you updated as we get approval and certifications, because again, right now, we're within striking distance of, and in fact, if David Hettison's ones would be recognized, as we believe they should be, that we, we'd already be there for, at least for a temporary basis. So we'll keep you updated as that's going. But yeah, the goal is that there'll likely be some clarification on this by the second quarter.
Okay.
Okay. Um, volunteer appreciation, I think that speaks for itself, it's just a matter of finding out what we're gonna do, when we're gonna do it. Policy updates, we talked about, um, putting something in our policy at the town council, and Pat, go ahead.
I'm sorry, my only question on the volunteer appreciation and the two policy updates was the timing, because we have so much front-loaded to get done by quarter two, I didn't know if it might be better to bump some of that to quarter three, depending what it is. Like, the, the, the volunteer appreciation, as we get into the holidays and stuff, how much attention are we gonna get from people on that?
Well, Paul and I were actually talking about that, and he suggested maybe like sometime around Columbus Day, it might be a good time to.
As long as you think it's doable, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe, we'll, we'll, we'll come in with you with something, because if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it, yeah, again, the narrow window in the fall before you hit the bad weather, and then the problem with spring is when you hit spring, then you hit into the graduations and everything else.
Yeah, and you don't want to do it in winter, because.
And all the reappointments.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's a goal to have a quarter two, I mean, we, we might adjust it. So yeah, on the, on the policy updates, um, the town council process, that might, you know, should be kind of straightforward, I can work on that, and, and Pat, you had mentioned about the town manager hiring, how to do it, go about doing.
Just a rough schedule at some point, just to give us an idea.
Well, I think, you know, it'd be a good idea to have some policy kind of, you know, it wouldn't be very detailed, because we do have, you know, something in the, in our charter that tells what we have to do when we are hiring a new town manager, and it probably also needs to, um, address what is actually in the town manager's current contract, so that we don't jump the gun on that, so, you know, just look at it.
I think you have an outline, I mean, you're seeing it happen in real time in three communities around us right now, so it's very current, you can probably learn lessons about what's effective, what's working, what's not working, because the time's gonna come eventually.
Yeah, so maybe that, maybe that's one that we shouldn't move to, like.
So I think we can look at it and hopefully have something back.
Quarter three or quarter four, and, and we can talk to.
I think we have time on that one.
Yeah, we do.
We do, yeah.
And then, uh, the charter update on regarding committees, um, so I guess we need to look at, on that. One of the reasons why, I don't know, Paul, you probably know this as well as I do, but when the charter was initially written, the only, from what I remember, the only committee that the select board could appoint was public celebrations. That was, that was very definitively, you know, stated in a charter, so, and I think, you know, I was on the charter review committee in 2006, and I believe we were the ones that suggested that the wording changed a little bit to allow the select board to do more appointments than that if they wanted to.
I think you had personnel board then, too.
Okay, maybe.
Yeah, personnel board, charter review, and then town council, town accountant, town manager. But you're right, then there was a conscious effort to allow the board to create ad hoc committees.
Right. Yeah, so anyway, we can look at that.
There was a, um, I apologize, when we had our work session, I forgot one thing. We had gotten an input from a resident about whether we should conduct training or have more clarity around, like, best practices when you're the chair, kind of a thing, and I just wanted to see how the board felt about that, or is it covered in the orientation material that you and Trish have put together?
I think we want to cover it in the orientation material, we also want to cover the internet policy, you know, on, you know, part of the onboarding and, and orientation that we're gonna do this fall, and, and council's already talked about the fact that they'd like to do some seminars as well, so I think we're gonna try to roll it into that, in terms of, you know, look, this is the basics in terms of, you know, open meeting law, um, but also here's how to chair and run a meeting, and then, oh, by the way, here's how you communicate, but these are the things you should be looking out for, so I think we're gonna try to broaden our onboarding to include that.
That would be great.
Yeah, I mean, we can put that in as a goal, or, I mean, I think we've already, you know.
And then when you have it, when it's available for the onboarding, I would send it out to the.
When people get to play it.
People who are currently on boards and committees, because you never know who the chair's gonna be in the next year.
And, and last year, I know Telemedia did record the, the onboarding seminar that we had, and they did play it a lot, I mean, it was, it was, it was always available, probably still is, so, yeah, we can do that. Alright, anything else? Anything else that we missed that we want to?
Good, Pat.
Alright. Yeah, so I'll make these adjustments and maybe bring them back next time, and then we can vote whether we, that will be sufficient to move forward with. Alright, we have some bid awards tonight, Paul.
Yeah, real quickly, uh, for the, um, first one is for disposal of catch base and the street sweeping debris. The Public Works issued a, you know, invitation for a bid, four bids were received, the lowest responsible bid was WL French Excavating, the amount of $94,500, more, more better, understood as a unit price of $47.25 per ton. So we're recommending the bid award to WL French, which we've had, worked well with over the last couple of years for that amount. You can see the price seems reasonable, you can see there was another bid that was relatively close, you know, $450, $40 above that. And then the other bid award, I guess we can do them jointly, was for the, um, oil-water separated tank installation project at Richardson Road, there were two bids received for that, from Apex Engineering and J&amp;R, um, let me call it, Resende's Corporation, and you can see there's quite a difference between the two bids, and, and the lowest bid is the lowest qualified bid, so again, we're recommending the bid award of $43,303.20 to Apex Engineering, again, which meets, falls within the project budget, which will also include the purchase of the tank and the removal of the materials from the existing tank.
So on the, the catch basin one, it, it notes addendum one, what was addendum one?
Addendum one for the, um.
I think somebody can help you.
Christine, yeah, she's here.
Addendum was, one was answering a question from a contractor, and it was in regards to if a loader would be provided at the site, and we did, uh, think that was a good opportunity to reduce costs, and, and the cost did come in actually relative, lower than last year. So we are providing the loader at the site for the project, and that was addressed in addendum one.
Okay, so that's why Tim's and Ally Excavating is probably so high, because they were gonna provide their own?
Potentially, yeah, they didn't acknowledge addendum one.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions? I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion, can I put them together? I'll make a motion to approve the town manager bid awards as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, first draft of, first draft of the town meeting warrant.
Yeah, it's hard to believe it's already here. Today was the deadline for the submission of petition warrant articles. One was included, because that was submitted earlier this summer, the other one arrived late this afternoon, you heard from it this evening from Mary, from Mary Donovan, uh, so that'll be on your second draft in two weeks, and then your following meeting, your first meeting in September is when you'll actually sign the warrant, the Monday after Labor Day. At this point, we have 22 articles, um, and there's a, as I said, there'll be a few more that's come on. Again, the beginning of the warrant tends to follow the traditional pattern, reports of offices and committees, which is always the first at every town meeting, and then the cemetery improvement fund, which, again, there'll be another request from the cemetery superintendents, superintendent and the cemetery commission, uh, and then the annual, you know, physical moving of, of the vote to move the money into the sewer construction stabilization fund, which is a procedural matter, and then we, we have a placeholder of funding for any collective bargaining agreements that may be reached, um, again, a placeholder to amend the current operating budget, which at this point, we don't know of any, but again, we keep it there at this point. Then there's a citizen petition article that was submitted by Paul Argazio to appropriate free cash to offset the cost of the Parker School feasibility study that was previously approved by borrowing at a previous town meeting. Then I have the funding for road and sidewalk construction, which has appeared the last couple of years, and will do it again. Don't know the exact dollar amount, because the, uh, town clerk, sorry, town accountant and treasurer collector are working on closing of the books, and, and we, we anticipate within the next few weeks, we'll have our free cash certified, so that'll give us the idea of what magnitude, but obviously, we're looking for a sizable investment in that. Working with, with DPW and the superintendent of schools is to finally get construction on the McCarthy Middle School exterior recreational area, you know, adjacent to the police station. You may know that used to house tennis courts, um, that, that material has been removed from that area, because the courts fell into disrepair, uh, we're bringing that back, um, and again, the, the plan is to seek town meeting approval, so that way, construction can take place in calendar year 25.
Construction of what?
Outdoor playing courts, that's why I use the word recreational area. It's a school property, okay? And the original notion was, you know, we'll replace the tennis courts with new tennis courts. But then in our discussions with Dr. Lang, um, we're right now in the midst of constructing tennis courts at the high school. We're also reconstructing the outdoor basketball courts that CYBL uses. And then the other component, if you've been over there, was the outdoor, uh, street hockey, you know? And as we know, we have this constant need for pickleball, constant requests for pickleball. So our thinking is, take the, put the pickleball with the tennis courts and the basketball courts over at the high school. Why is that a good idea? Because there's no neighbors. Because we're, as, as I've notified the board, believe it or not, we had a complaint from the one pickleball court, uh, at Varney, because they were playing too early in the morning, and the neighbors were annoyed by the noise from the pickleball.
That is right on the house.
Exactly. And so the concern with putting pickleball at, at the McCarthy School is it's right next to the police station and right next, you know, to the McCarthy School. And so the, the high school is, is more remote in terms of, for noise factor. So the idea would be, well then, maybe we transition the street hockey over to the McCarthy, which Dr. Lang pointed out, that's more played for, utilized more by middle school students anyway than high school students. So that's why I use the word recreational area, as opposed to, I didn't use courts, because someone said, well, that's not courts, you know? So that's the plan, and then also part of that is to, again, expand that area so that it's not only a recreational area, but then you do have the passage and connection way with a gate, that you could then get to the back of McCarthy, so that way, if there are events, either at McCarthy for voting, or at the police station for use of the thing, that there is a roadway area, you know, that you can traverse through there, so.
So that's what, in the language of the article, that's what the parking and vehicle are access?
Exactly, yeah.
Because just, I mean, I would also just keep in mind, as this plan matures, there was a big outcry at town meeting against taking the tennis courts down and putting pavement down.
Right, and that's why we've come back with, the, the component is really for recreational area, but there will be an ancillary use to improve the passageway for vehicle. Now again, town meeting can vote it down, but we're not gonna say there's no vehicles, we're not gonna say there's no access to that area. We think, meaning the opinions of myself, superintendent of schools, uh, you know, public works director, is that that may be the best solution for that area. We'll see. But, but we've, you know, it's, it's been a couple of years since this was considered by town meeting, um, and again, it's school property, not town property, so I can't guide this, I need the buy-in from the school committee superintendent in order to bring this to town meeting, because it's school property, it's under the care custody control of the school committee, it's languished there, as we quote Frank, a little too long, and so I've been pushing this thing, can we get something to town meeting and get this, because other people can say, well, what's, what's going on over there? Nothing's happening. And, and I'm also getting pressure from the pickleball component as well, saying that, you know, everywhere around us, people are building pickleball courts, but we're not seeing any in Chelmsford. So that's, that's where we're at at this point in time, and again, as, in the next month, you will see, hopefully, a schematic plan that shows the whole area. The next one is the replacement of the sewer force main on Progress Avenue, uh, again, that's funded through sewer revenues, but we again recently had another break over there. We want to stay ahead of that issue, uh, there's a pipe area, there's a section of pipe that needs to be replaced. We're continuing to work on sewer infiltration and inflow. There's drainage project on Hugo Lane, which would come from the stormwater enterprise account. We did receive an earmark in the budget that the governor signed for $50,000 for, to replace the food pantry modular building in the rear. That's gonna cost more than that, you may recall, our initial request was for $90,000, so we'll, we'll come in and ask for the difference, to not only purchase it, but install it, you know, equip it. We also have an effort, we talked about in the past, in the goals, about document digitalization. So again, we've, we've had a department head meeting, we're coming forward with a request to kick that off, and then also probably have it voted in the annual budget annually, because it's an ongoing cost. We had an earmark in the state budget that didn't get approved for tree and invasive species inventory and management plan, so we'll likely ask for that funded at town meeting, because the invasive plant problem is a growing concern, um, and we really want to do a pilot project and get going on that. And then the balance would be, if there's any funds remaining, to transfer free cash to the general stabilization fund. And then the balance would be, if there's any funds remaining, to transfer free cash into the General Stabilization Fund. The next item would be the West Chelmsford and South Chelmsford Fire Station construction projects, which, as you know, was not only the town meeting vote, but also on the ballot in November. And then we then move into the community preservation articles. One is to rescind an unexpended, unexpended community preservation fund appropriation for facade program that just never took off, and Monday's been languishing there. And then also to fund a project to expand the, and community housing at One Smith Street, where the aged 64 units would be raised, and then the 96 units would be constructed. And our funding would be a, a component to the overall other additional funding that the Housing Authority and Choice would obtain for that project, which would probably be built in 2027 or so. There's also a request from the Water District, they want to obtain an easement across the McCarthy and the Parker School properties. They've submitted us a preliminary plan for McCarthy, we're awaiting the one for Parker. And again, that would, that again, needs approval from the school committee, but thus far, the early indications are sure, you know, this will help the, the town through its water pay, its safe funding. And then there's a request from the Conservation Commission to transfer care, custody, control, and management of five parcels to the commission. The most notable is Warren Pole. The other four are wet parcels that the treasurer collector has acquired by tax possession over the years. So the main one, again, at this time, is Warren Pole, which, which
It's Coolest come up.
Coolest will come in once they, that'll probably, that'll probably be a year from now, once they get their preservation restriction in the drafted form. The next one after that is acquiring a drainage easement at 40 High Street. And then there's a, we have to, believe it or not, when DPW was doing the paving project out on Parker Street, they found out that a portion of it was not accepted, so we're working to bring that in, so that gets, again, counted on our Chapter 90 inventory. Since the publishing of this, DPW Director and I were out at the golf course last Friday. We are once again experiencing problems with golfers hitting the balls over the 50-foot nets at the first tee. And so the request is to address, and we were out there and physically saw it happen with a, with a young man, which wasn't deliberate. So the idea is to add a 25-foot extension on top of a portion of that netting. In addition to all the other things we've done, you know, improve the play on that first hole to prevent that from occurring. The other thing that's happened, and you'll see it in the next report, is the governor is gonna, has a ceremony tomorrow where she's gonna sign the housing bond bill, which is, the board and the community should be aware, allows for accessory dwelling units by right in single-family zone districts. I've reached out to the Community Development Director and said, should we rescind our local accessory apartment bylaw, because it certainly does not align with state law, as will be the case. And, but the, the difficulty right now is, we probably should rescind it, the problem is, we don't know what to replace it with. Because what the, what the statute says is that, that towns may adopt reasonable regulations for setbacks, septic, height, bulk for these accessory dwelling units. And then it goes on to say that the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities may promulgate, may promulgate guidelines or regulations. I doubt we're gonna get any clarity tomorrow on this. So the problem we have right now is our zoning bylaw, right now, as of tomorrow, will not conform to state law, which is never a good thing, because it causes confusion. But the problem is, is we don't know what reasonable setbacks are, and we don't know, the word "may" is very vague. It's not "shall," it's "may," so we don't know when, how, whether the state's gonna provide guidelines. So we're actually working right now to figure out what exposure does a town have. And the only thing that we can do at this point is, is, well, what if the setback requirements and height requirements and other requirements were the same as the principal dwelling? So in other words, if it's 30 feet from the lot line, or, as you know, in some of the earlier versions of the bylaw, your setbacks are what the zoning was when the building, when the structure was constructed. What if we use that just as a standard by default? To determine what our exposure is, meaning like, what could be built in town, but also, would that be the basis for reasonable regulations? Obviously, this is a discussion that has to take place with council, has to take place with the planning board. But it's not too early, it may be too early for fall town meeting, but I just wanted the board to be aware of that in the event something does surface over the next few weeks. Or maybe even, you know, the, the other challenge is the planning board's not meeting till the end of the month. But it could be something, maybe in a special town meeting within the annual or something. But this issue of ADUs is gonna become law this fall. And I don't think we want to either be in violation of that law or be caught unprepared.
I mean, imagine we won't be the only ones, though.
Yeah.
Right?
And then, and then, and then the last one, right, but that, the question is, is, yeah, how do you?
Yeah, everybody will be doing this.
And then the other one is, is we're looking at the exterior painting of the North Town Hall and the Center Town Hall. It's been a long time since we did that project, and it
Did we finish that?
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. So we're looking to see, again, if we approve it this fall, that would allow the work to take place next spring or next summer. We also gotta put shutters back up on the, on the Center Town Hall. We don't want to put the shutters up and then have to take them down, then put them back up. So again, that may come up, and again, if you have any other suggestions over the next couple of weeks. Again, I'll come back with a revised draft at the next meeting, and then you'll have the document for signing, again, the Monday after Labor Day, which is like, you know, not that far away. So that's where we are with the draft warrant. I'm also required to provide you with a list of qualified officers and a designated backup signatory as per previous years, in accordance with Section 46 of the Town Charter. The list that I'm providing for you would be Finance Director John Souza, Public Works Director Christine Clancy, and Police Chief Colin Spence. Again, that's no change from the current year, the previous year, or, you know, years. And then the last item is the impact on the Town of Chelmsford result to the end of the state legislative session. Well, I prepared this memo on Wednesday, thinking the legislature was gonna finish on Wednesday night. And then, as you know, they didn't finish till 10 o'clock on Thursday morning, and as you know, they didn't finish a lot of things. So that's why the memo is so brief. And obviously, I'll keep you updated. I've already touched upon a little about it, but the ADUs. But in terms of the budget, you know, I provided you and the Finance Committee with the local aid numbers that came out from the Department of Revenue as a result of the governor signing the budget. The good news there is the, our Chapter 70 education funds were up 3.81%, or $104 for a student. And our unrestricted general government aid was up by 3%, $182,000. As I mentioned, we did receive earmarks, $50,000 for the food pantry trailer that I mentioned earlier, $75,000 for planting of shade trees in the, along the town's right-of-way in our environmental justice community areas, $50,000 for the upgrade of electrical vehicle charging stations at the Adams Library, and $25,000 for the Council on Aging to meet the nutritional needs of elders, which has been a perennial one for the Council on Aging. And then there was a policy change having to do with the tax title foreclosure process, which came from the U.S. Supreme Court ruling, I think out in Minnesota, where the, the Supreme Court ruled that a municipality taking the entire proceeds from the sale of a tax delinquent property was an undue taking, and that towns may no longer retain the excess equity from a tax foreclosure. So the legislature, you know, threw it in as a late amendment to the budget without a lot of public hearings, which is a polite way of saying, we think they did some things that could have been codified. And in fact, the Municipal Association asked the governor to send it back for some changes. The governor chose not to. So as of now, the tax title interest rate, uh, interest rate for tax title possessions that are held by the town is reduced from 16% to 8%. The interesting part about that is, is when, if your taxes are delinquent, that isn't put into tax title, the interest rate is 14%. So if you don't pay your taxes, you, you start accruing an interest rate penalty at 14%. But then if it goes to tax title, it goes down to 8%. We think this doesn't make any sense, but that's what they've done. Also, there's requirements that, that a town in order to sell a property has to engage a broker for a year. We think that prolongs and diminishes the value of the property, and that's another thing, the Municipal Association and actually Finance Director John Souza wrote a letter to the governor's office, asking them to please, you know, modify that. So again, those are the changes, so on tax possessions. Again, not a major one, we, we don't frequently have tax possessions. And one of the reasons why you've not heard of those is, we're, we've become very aggressive, meaning if somebody falls behind, as you can see, John puts out in the notice of the tax taking, and then we reach out to the people, because our philosophy has been, and I use ours, me, myself, John Souza, has been, the best thing you can do to help these people is to, is to get to them early. Because if you sit there and say, oh, the town can accrue 16% interest or over 8% of it, that's fine. But we're not in this for a win for the town. The best thing to do for a person is to help them either address their problem or to move on. Because if they haven't, they've obviously chosen not to do tax deferral. But the bigger thing is, is, you know, ignoring the problem doesn't make it go away. In fact, it almost makes it more sustainable. So that's, so that's the change there. Again, we'll keep you updated, what more the legislature might do. There's some talk of them going back into a special session to deal with an economic development bill. We don't know if also that would be an opportunity for them to deal with some other things. As you, you may have noted, municipal reform never even got to the table, which is disappointing, because that was a priority of the governor. And there were other things that, the hospital, it just worked, obviously, never got redressed, and so forth. The Veterans Bill did get approved. We're looking to see what, what if there are any benefits. We've notified our, and provided the text of it to our Veterans Agent Regina Jackson. We're trying to see what, if anything, is applicable for Chelmsford and that. And then obviously, the housing bill, we know, is being signed tomorrow. And again, we circulate that language out to, as we had our discussions earlier. So that's, that's sort of my, the completion of my report this evening.
Okay, and you have some appointments?
Yeah, real quickly, in the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Sarah Maggio for a three-year term expiring June 30th, '27. Board of Assessors Harrison Mayotte for a three-year term expiring June 30th, '27. Council on Aging Steve Maffetone for a three-year term expiring June 30th, '27. Cultural Council Barbara Shumpung for a three-year term expiring June 30th, '27. And then for the Parade Committee, Charles Marcela for a one-year term expiring July 31st, 2025.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager appointments as presented.
Second.
There, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have some minutes. On July 15th and July 22nd. Anybody have any comments, corrections, edits on any of them, on either of them? If not, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board regular meeting minutes of July 15th, 2024, and July 22nd, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are on reports. George, you have anything? No.
Not much, just quickly, we have our first MSBA meeting this week, Thursday, I think. So the enrollment figures got placed, and so this will be kind of a kickoff with MSBA to start a discussion about possibly building a new Parker Middle School. So I'll report next time.
Okay, there we go.
Just an FYI, when the, the board had approved putting the language for the proposed fire station renovations on the ballot, and Paul got approval from the state on that language within the past week.
Oh, okay. And that will be on the
November 5th.
Yeah, they acknowledged receipt of it, so we've done everything we can do. And I want to thank the Clerk's Office, they were very helpful in getting the necessary certifications and such.
Okay, and the only thing I have, last week, Linda Webb, who worked at the library for probably over 30 years, passed away. I don't know if anybody here remembered her. Anyway, so condolences to Linda's family, and I know there, I went to the services, there were a lot of representatives there from the library, so it was very nice to see. Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return.
For the purpose of
Sorry, for the purpose of strategy with respect to litigation, Woodland versus the Town of Chelmsford. Strategy with respect to potential litigation for Ledged Road commercial truck traffic, and to review the executive session minutes of June 24th, 2024, segments one and two.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, it'll be a roll call vote, George?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, five zero. Okay, we are adjourned to executive session, thank you.